We thank you, Lord, for loving us and caring for our Lord and looking after us. We pray, Lord, that we may seek your guidance in all that we do, and what we do being keepers, but I will be for the better of the people of this county, Lord, and we thank so much, y'all, love so well. We pray for those that are sick, we pray for those that are bereaved, Lord, and pray for those that have problems. Thank you, Lord, for looking after us and caring, that we had no more hax because we did this weather, Lord. Thank you once again for looking over and caring for us. Be with us today when we make decisions, and I'll be a keeper, though I will. We can ask all these things on a Sunday. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Pretty good. Uh, need a motion from the county. Come on, Mike.
Hey.
Need a motion from the county.
Okay, well, one second. Now you've got a thing in. She's here for the line.
Okay, and Jim Meals, you're up.
Thank you, Jim. I just...
All right, brother.
You got a good job. Thank you. It was a great idea, and they wouldn't tell me all that, so it didn't turn out like it was supposed to, but we still had to deal with it. But safety meeting a couple weeks ago because of the ice and snow and everything else we've had postponed. We're gonna try to have it again in the morning at the two-way shop. Seven fifteen in the morning. This Mike Shaw is here to tell us at this time, like we're all like, just try to bring your hands and be there in the morning, please. Thank you, Jim. And Mike, about ten thirty tomorrow, they'll have to have a safety meeting. Just me and you. Everybody seven fifteen, and this Mike and a couple others, be at ten thirty in the morning. Thank you, Jim.
What do we want to meet at? Seven?
Uh, our little meeting, the safety committee meeting, at my office.
Okay.
Done a good job in the last couple weeks. But thank you. It wasn't me, it was everybody, you know. People coming into ELC this time, we had about twenty-six people showing up. We had hospitals and besides, also got out there that would let us know their plans. It was a lot easier on everyone.
Yeah, yeah. Always worth it to get it.
Thank you, Jim.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for the service.
Yes, sir.
You're welcome.
They say we meet again now two weeks from today, or one more, and cake will be good.
They keep on trying, getting better.
Well. Nah, see, about that.
Make it a little larger than pain.
Okay.
Think we're... We have to stop.
Yeah, have you heard from Janine?
I want her to come. I have vessel shells before Janine can show up.
Mike Shaw's coming to talk at nine-thirty? We'll be in up there at ten.
Also be at ten forty.
Can we just, uh, just give ahead to the official permit for the bond for logging? Can we do that? Want to get some motion or get that Mike Shaw, we may need to wait with Mike Shaw to do that too, though. To see what, you know, if we have any rights to that, I don't know. Well, it looks like we have something to permit.
We're jamming about a guy anyway.
Some of it anyway. I don't know, uh, what the permit, what would be a permit.
But doing a major running off late and like you were, you know, they don't fix them. They're always supposed to clean them up, ain't they? They're supposed to, yeah. Is it word or whatever?
This, they were loading over there off, uh...
Didn't haul enough. They had a road out blocked yesterday. Had a block.
They had, uh...
With the sand, kept on.
On two thirty-three, they put the loading, or once raining, they didn't move the loggers, just took next to highway, don't worry. Just get loading out.
I do, next to.
Got mud, that's state road, we didn't work, you know, sweep it off or lay it off or whatever they do. We just need something, I think, for dead ducks, the roads, when they tear up a paved road, if they need, they can give a permit to do it, then maybe the engineering department can go out and take a picture of the road, and when they tear it up, they can fix the back.
Becoming loggers.
Logging companies, yeah.
Yeah.
We have some young people that...
What'd they do, lay a road?
Don't live in, don't live in Maryland, can't come here logging, and they don't pay.
You talking about out of, out of state permits or state all?
We want, we want all logger. I've been, I'm speaking for myself.
Yeah.
Permit, any logging company come on any, you know, it's gonna be hauling across our, our roads, you know, and a lot of times they'll, they'll go to the back way out, and when they go a half mile to a state road, they'll go two miles down the route, a little bit of road, and dodge it.
But they do it in Mississippi, they don't with log, with weather. They buy, you know, track over Bull Mountain, back in that area right there. When it rains, gets too wet, here they come.
Well, this hill here in Alabama too, it's dry on the hill.
Does the state have anything as far as their permits are concerned? What, what do they do on, on their roads, anything?
Oh, yeah.
Really, really, um, that they have to comply with?
You look for...
They got a weight limit, but their weight limit, their rule to take their weight limit, and ours has got the same weight limit theirs has, and ours won't take it.
Clean up and all that kind of thing.
But still, you, how are you gonna distinguish between a log truck and a freight truck?
Most logs will take tracking, I mean, most freight trucks...
Well, that's pretty, they don't track dirt, but I mean, they, they...
If field of ditch is full, field of ditch is full, and...
Run over any colors, Mike, from there. That would care.
Well, usually they don't, uh, they just run off side of the road, and they don't have covers.
Well, I got one that's called nickel cemetery road, two and a half mile, I guess, for the cemetery. We had one set of loggers logging the front part. Well, they fixed, daddy fixed, you know, pretty well, pretty good, but he put a rock in it, and here comes the other bunch, and following, logging, following, and they totally thrown it, you can't drive a county truck down there without strapping the tracks, getting the tracks to log out. No, that, the back bunch didn't have no scales on their truck. Front was working scales, scales, scaling it out, though. But the good loggers are not hurting as bad as these flat and that, no here, coming out of state, out of other counties. I got people up there, Ed County, Franklin County. The other day, we got killed, a logger, you know, one logger in there, killed it. They waited, we leave up there, and they haul logs out, even if it looks sad. But we don't, million and a half dollars spent on it when they bring it out on there, and it already slipping in it, paving slipping, breaking, going down the hill over there to church, moving the pavement that much.
But we don't have anything right now as far as...
No, zero. Even a mark in there, that's perfect. I went to a few of them and asked them back in Maryup to clean it up, but the road was a couple minutes, and they would somewhat put anything in writing or any permit. I don't know what it, but they, some of them would grade it off a little bit, but anyway, they, they mess them up.
We started it several years back, and some of them would tell you they were, when they were having to cut, but most of them, they never ever told me they were cutting.
I had one guy come and tell me it's done. He'd call me daily when he was leaving. There ought to be somebody have to look at the road.
Yeah.
Wants to come and wants to... Mike, Mike does it, but he will do that, won't he? Yeah, he did. He's wanting to look at my road, and, yeah, and they like, oh, great, boy, they get it going, they should be checked off. I put this load the road, put two barricades, a load, and they just moved on yesterday. There's a road over on, what's, it's two forty-one. But they've got that, I don't watch that as rock, it is, but that's that old big gray stuff, go all the way up that hill, and they got sweeper.
And when they do an act, you all right.
Yeah, they have a sweeper over on that one, an actual sweeper. Probably going out on state road too. But it's on two forty-one.
That's good.
The state, yeah. State, they're forgiving for themselves. But a logger don't realize, bring that mother guy down, carry off state road, people have a rig, they allow, and that's state, it's again.
A lot of them, they can't find them long, whatever. What was he afraid about for mine?
I don't know what kind of road it was. I had a picture with him.
Yeah, with this permit, they, they pay it. Here, pay five dollars. Your permit. That way you know the bag, that's on the farm.
I saw a lot of, take a lot of forty acres with ten. Whatever you put it up there, it wouldn't be a five hundred dollar permit. They'd be, they'd be even winners from fixed ten dollars, they ain't worried about ten dollars. That's just a huge shine, man.
I know, but it's just, no one do that. If we get out there, take a picture of the road and everything, and make sure it's in good condition when they start, you know, if there's, and they're gonna be skidding down the road, I'll help them do that. I'll help them steer down that local road.
I had them love them in the road, Eddie, had them down there, loved them in the road.
Oh, yeah. Well, one guy on the way one time, and he was, had his knuckle up, sitting on the side of the truck, sitting in the road.
Yeah.
And those was dusting him out, holly grail.
I guess you quit, eh? Goodness.
I told him, as quick as I could, I'll get that front end logger, I'll do this stuff apart when I come back. I told him, lost the ditch over part, and he moved it over. Well, that was a guy in Hamilton, doing that.
I don't know why that happened.
His wife's gonna write, or yeah, yeah, talk about.
Does Blue take any extra pain to clean up his?
No. He ain't like never mind, walk the dosh up down the road. And that time we'll be on one of the more empty paved roads later. Whether you have a track on this side, a track on this side, needs to walk the dosh about, and skiers and bringing back, forth across the road.
Really, I think it ought to be a permit or a bough, neither one, ought to be stripped for nothing. They interest in going back, cleaning up, fixing, calling, saying, hey, we're through, look at it.
Some of the little loggers, though, you, they can't hardly do that.
Well, I think the fellow with the same white truck, he's not hurting nothing much.
No.
He ain't hurting nothing much. And that's the old boy out there, just trying to feed his family too, but he ain't worried about it.
The legal thing will hurt most of them. They'll bring their big skiers and they can get on the bike.
They'll like the truck to tear up on my log to his town.
Oh, anybody does.
No.
Hope Sean boys, I think, drive it.
Yeah, but he wasn't waiting on a second one. Should do it then.
Oh, Lord. Eugene Hill, he used to go all the time, but he don't do it no more.
Road is rotten, man. Ever before, and this county is rotten.
It's wet. Well, I don't know.
I can't figure out how in the world a safety tank is, my yard could just fit it on a trumper, snow laying on it, and a safety tank's still working. I haven't know how in the world it is.
Heard Mr. Shaw.
Morning. How you doing?
You would rather park down, making people get permits, everybody uses the road.
Well, I do.
I love county.
I do.
I love counties, but you bring stuff.
Why do you make that?
If you cold, your people are all cold, people.
They're really cold, uh, they're cold in there.
You, you go look for all pictures of that.
But you now, though.
Are they paying service tax? Lager don't pay that. That's where it would come from. Don't let you donate, or hard out of this county, come back for the road.
I, 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 I ain't logging business, free in state.
No, they, I mean, that's a milligan project, was better than you can't now. They give a lot of...
First of all, I go to them.
Service tax, that, that service tax, that's three, four.
The farmer, totally bad, that one, towards him.
At least, at least somebody, we got supply, no one can ban that, and we don't get one.
You know, we, I said, because loggers don't pay a service tax, like coal service tax.
No, no, no. You gotta get that done one gum.
What's that?
Service tag.
Yeah, right, right.
You know, Russ will guide it, and I turn around and give it to him, even though it's a little too, what Farmer told me, to get away from them, ten cents a ton, and lose.
Yeah, I don't really, mental service tax, yeah.
Well, this is...
We got a mental service tax, it was, it comes to us, but it's about three dollars a year.
Yeah, we used to be a little bit bigger over that.
Mike, we was talking about, uh, making the loggers get permits and bonds. How much do you know about that?
Well, you know, there's a law that allows the county, authorized the county commission to require, it's a, actually, it's a notification to, of the point of, of logging. Initially, you can't require a bond, I don't think, unless they have a history of violations, but there is, there is, um, a note, Logging Notification Act, that allows the county commission to require that of, of the loggers.
Notification.
It's a notification, yeah.
We already got that, done, done it.
Well, within that notification, and I'd have, I'd have to look at it to be more specifically, to make sure I'm correct, but, um, what they do, they notify you, the point of access, we go out and approve it to make sure that it's in order, it's safe, that they, you know, that they got the proper drainage in place, and then actually, they have to give us the proposed route that they're gonna, that they're gonna travel.
We can't tell them what's up.
Well, they, yeah, well, well, yeah, we do have some degree, we can approve that route or disapprove that route, and actually, we would probably go out before they began work and do an assessment of that section of roadway to determine what damage, if any, that they caused.
But you can go back to the, if they've caused damage, and...
I, I think, yeah, I think you can, you know, and we, I've started to look at it, but, but I think, I think you can require them to, to fix what they damaged.
Why they do it in the market and all that? They put up a bone for them.
Well, there again, it's my understanding, you can initially require a bond if they have, they have a history of violations. I think there are some provisions for bonding at that point, but initially, I don't think you can require that until such time they have a violation, and Scott May can speak to that a little bit, if that's the way I can remember it.
How about, I mean, on the permit, how about the ones who don't get it, or the ones who won't get the permit, what do you do then?
Well, they're, they're in violation of the law, and I think it's somewhere around five hundred dollars a day for each day in violation of the law. I'd have to look at the penalty as well, but, you know, I think it's around five, you know what Scott would give? I think it's five hundred dollars a day if they're in violation of that ordinance or that law.
If they hadn't got a permit.
That's right.
How would they know to get a permit? I mean...
Well, I mean, obviously, through the local media, you could, you know, put the word out that the county commission has, has decided to take advantage of that, adopt that ordinance.
I think we already did that, and nobody ever contacted.
No, y'all have not, y'all haven't, y'all have, yeah, well, the Association of County Commissions has, I mean, it, it's a law that was enacted by the legislature, and y'all just have the option to either, you know, impose that act or not.
We didn't.
We, we haven't done that, no, we haven't done that.
How long has that been, what, in effect?
Uh, it's been in effect, what, two or three years?
Oh.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind saying, uh, a small fee for a permit, and give them a rule, give them a sheet of when they come get a five dollar permit, give them a sheet of what we expect, uh, the loggers then, uh...
Here, here's the deal on that. You have, if you adopt any type of permit system, it has to be in compliance with that law. You cannot do anything that deviates from the existing law. It would be illegal for the county commission to try to adopt something separate from what the, the logging ordinance is already been approved of.
But what is a law?
Pardon me?
What is a law?
Well, that's what I said, they, you, we can require them to give us notification of where they're gonna be logging, the point of access, they can, they have to give us the route they propose to take, and then we have to approve it.
No charge for the permit, though?
I don't, there's not a charge for the permit, I don't believe, no.
Well, how long would this take, or, uh, I mean, you'd take, uh, surely, most of them know they're gonna, a week before they're gonna cut.
Yeah, nor, normally, you'd wanna get two or three days notice. Y'all have to actually appoint a license inspector that would go out, you know, and, and, and review this, and look at this.
What do we have a person down to do that, or that's something else?
That's how much we'll pay if they think, I don't, I ain't charging five dollars for a permit.
I don't, I don't think you can charge for the permit, Kenny. And I may be wrong, like I said, I haven't looked at the act in, in detail, but, but I don't think you can require a, a fee for the permit.
Well, I think the county commission, one of the strongest people they are in the county, when you can't do that.
Well, no, there are some provisions in the law to protect the county's entrance, interest in, in, you know, in the roads. I mean, you can, you can approve or disapprove based on what they submit.
I don't, same, I think, it's, it ain't matter of what we got, they ain't gonna pay no attention to it, nobody. Make it stiff or nothing.
Long as you, long as you'll catch it, the one they gonna pay, or get, I mean, get the, uh, permit up front, play with a permit, it's just five hundred dollars, they gonna pay you.
Only way you can do it, like, is to make it stronger enough. If I know I got a fellow over a thousand dollars, man, that's, you know, you know, and you know, I'll come back.
Yeah, and I think there may, may be some provisions, once they have violated the law. I think initially, everybody's assumed to be fair and good, and then if they violate it, and I think there may be some additional penalties that you can imply, impose.
Next time they come get a permit.
Well, I made a picture of road up here and behind Block Log Church, went to court, one bill, or ranking vote over there, and cost that logging company thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, and I don't know, Scott, if, if, if we go out today and they're damaging our road, can we pursue legal action to them just based on, without the logging ordinance law? Like, can we pursue that?
I think so. I'd like it, like it better if we had the law.
You deal with that, I heard what logging does, go along with a permit, you do that. Well, I don't see that they turn something up, we can do just the way what we got without doing anything.
But you don't know who done it, Bob. That's the thing, that's the thing about getting a permit. You don't know who, what logging companies done it.
I got two of them same, really.
Yeah, I've had two.
Well, I know, but very seldom logging, they, unless it's an acre of ice, well, they can log, you'll catch them there if you do what driving around, when you're like this.
I've got, I'm trying to get the tracks, but, uh, eight acre tracks, you didn't, you didn't know, so...
Yeah, they, but, um, I got books down there, a week some, they're going out about five miles on the gravel road there, but that's all, that's the best way they can get out. I'm planning on going that way and getting one oh seven down there, rather than going back on about sixty-nine there, and going to Winfield.
It's all pieces, didn't, like...
No, that's not.
You need no mind, man, I don't get your...
It is, it is from, there's a trucking place, a high way, on Winfield, yeah, it's worse going that way, 'cause, or that's, uh, uh, that's van trucks, it's not logging. Uh, yeah, but you can tell the difference for the trucking, it's, it's better road toward you than it is where it went down the way, but I mean, still, uh, you, they pay, they don't think pay a lot of road use tax.
We just don't get no, the back.
Well, that's true too, that's not their fault.
On the county level.
That's not their fault. I mean, you go, um, you can use this road, they'll, they'll give you some figures, uh, you wonder, why can't you use it?
I can warm out anybody. I can warm out anybody, we don't have none.
But I mean, they got legitimate.
Oh, we, Mike, on that thing, uh, we can either adopt the thing the state's got, or the ACCA's got, and go, just like they got their word coming.
Yeah, it's actually, I understand, the state law, if, if you do some type of permit system, it has to be in accordance with that act, and, and, yeah, we would need to comply with, with that act fully, if, you know...
That's our only alternative, but we would, there's no, there's nothing else to do.
Well, if you, if you wanna know where there access to the road and, and what damage, yeah, that's, that's the way you would handle it.
Well, we need to do that, or should we?
All we can do is react, we can create that for.
But like, if the same logging company keeps doing this, and a lot of it is the same logging companies.
Yeah, that's different.
You know, they might hit, done here in Winfield today, and next month, they might be up here doing the same thing. That's the only thing, if you can catch them, then, then, then you could make them put up a bond. Is that what you're saying?
Well, you know, and I, like I said, I, I want to look at it a little more closely, you know, really wasn't prepared to speak about it in detail today, didn't know it was gonna come up, but, um, I, I think initially, you cannot require a bond. I think there may be some provisions, if you have a repeat violator, that you may can require the posting of a bond, um...
This bad get off for some time, I don't go, ain't no, since he's been driving, do nothing with it. Can we see what we're legal to do, and then bring up a force to find out what we can do and what we can't do? But we, we need something. I agree, Kenny, they, they turn these roads up, and they, they need to be something there.
Well, we, we can require them to notify us of, of a point of access. That has, that has to be approved by probably the county engineer or the license inspector. We can require them to, to give us a proposed route to, to get their timber to the market. We can, we can inspect that road prior to the beginning, and after they complete, I think we can require them to pay for any damages that they have created along that haul route. And, um, they have to, it's actually, the, the permit is, is, the permit would be the person that owns the timber when it accesses the right of way.
Well, all...
That's who's name the permit would be in.
I just need, uh...
No, it's not the logger, but the owner.
No, it's the, the timber owner. Whoever, if he, if that logger has bought that timber, then he would be the owner of that timber. Uh, if, you know, so it's whoever owns the timber at the point of access.
Where, where, contract from the...
Pardon me?
If warehouse has a contract for the timber.
Be warehouse.
Be warehouse.
That's right. If they own, whoever owns the timber, when you access the county's right of way, would be the person that would apply for the permit and be responsible.
Well, I just, I need a motion to adopt that for logging permits. That's what I need.
Now, he's talking about too, a li, somebody with license.
Well, before, you know, you, yeah, yeah, you'll, you'll have to appoint a license inspector, and actually, I, I would like to have an opportunity to maybe revisit the law a little bit, just to make sure that we've got everything in order, but like I said, didn't really plan on talking about this this morning, but that's just...
So you recommend a table.
Well, yeah, I think, I think we need to make sure we got all our induction rub before we, before we do that. Well, yeah, I think, I think we we need to make sure we got all our induction rub before we, before we do that.
We'll, we'll just tape it as next Monday.
Yeah, I think that'd be, I think that'd be a good idea, if, let's get a chance to look at the law, make sure that we've got everything in order.
Have you got anything else, Mike?
We got a bid open at nine thirty.
At nine thirty?
We got two of them, one at nine thirty, one at ten, we, we, I hoped to have them both at nine thirty, but we didn't get that changed, so one of them's at ten.
Nine twenty-nine.
Let's do this bid open in a second.
Bid open, bring it up, Mike. Come on up, Mike. We got, we got one bid on the truck that I was listening to, but I was making sure we just had one bid.
The bid on what?
On the truck, um.
Yeah, to ten o'clock.
The, one of them's at ten and one's at nine thirty, I saw.
Which one is?
I think the truck. It's, uh, the truck for district three.
District three. Pickup truck?
We have one bid.
Is it a pickup truck or dump truck or? Truck, truck.
Trying to kick back this.
Certified check, little bid, Bob. Total bid price, nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
What's the pickup truck?
It's a tractor truck, it's a two thousand six Sterling, model seventy-five hundred series, um, whatever, whatever your pleasure is, Mr. Commissioner. I mean, it's for, it's for district three, so.
So what, Mike?
Two thousand six Sterling, model seven five hundred.
Single answer?
Let me say this.
Yeah.
In that, in that this is the only bid, you do have the right to negotiate this bid, is that right?
Well, I'm gonna take that right, just to do that.
Okay.
Negotiate that bid. Since it is the only bid, right?
That's right, we we have that option.
I do want that option.
Okay. I guess.
They didn't do that?
We need a motion, I don't think. Need a motion for district three to buy a truck.
Negotiate.
Negotiate a truck.
Yeah, negotiate, yeah.
All in favor?
Would you allow to negotiate and to purchase?
Since it's on one bid, you can negotiate that price.
Yeah, but I mean, you're also, you know, not just negotiating, you're also allowed to purchase.
You know, be negotiating, you don't have to go and purchase it.
Yeah, exactly, that's what, yeah, it's, two different things, yeah.
One other thing while we're sitting here waiting for the next bid, we got the spring cleanup coming April eighteenth to the twenty-fifth through the power organization. Do y'all want to participate that again this year, and if you do, I need to go ahead and make arrangements to get your cleanup bags. Do y'all remember how many y'all used last year?
Eighty-eight hundred, better than eight hundred, I used.
Eight hundred bags?
I probably used twenty-five.
You used eight hundred and thirty.
Okay, Kenny's up to playing, Bob, buddy.
I hear not here for.
Didn't we get like four boxes a piece, start with?
Yeah, five, man, come back.
I had to buy some, I had to go buy some.
Yeah, how many, how many's in a box, I don't know, how many's in it, three hundred, three hundred a box, or, y'all remember?
I know, and I've got some there.
Those people went to work, fifty or over, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, just they call that give.
You can go back what you had last year.
Yeah, y'all.
Add just a little too.
I don't remember, I don't know.
Seems like we got about.
I think Tommy got one box.
Half which still left.
That's why I'm using that, I'll keep playing.
I think we got.
I'll, I'll, they'll probably, no, I'll check and see.
We got four or six boxes starting with these.
Yeah, I I was thinking that it was four or six boxes that y'all had received.
Yeah, I went, I may got two, three more and.
Yeah, I kinda got.
I think it's something I brought.
I'll try to get eight to ten boxes, maybe something like that.
Any money in there, or they just burn it's garbage bags?
Just garbage bags. And I think y'all, some of y'all may use some, some prisoner y'all last year.
We got, we got two hundred feet, four mile road, you gotta have some of that.
That's right, that's right.
They enjoy doing it, as mine did, doesn't mean no, you know, for them to get out, I think, say, I crack a lot.
Yeah, you need to fight to get out.
Yeah, I don't know why, they're, so long as, I don't know why they in jail, I mean.
I don't know. They sang it too loud in church.
I saw the bumper sticker yesterday that said, my son got in late for a year. Well, I mean, that could be a good thing, maybe shake it up a little.
Actually, there's.
Yes, sir.
Jan.
I'm, I'm ready, he is not gonna be here, something came up at, at the office and he couldn't come. For those of you who don't know, we have Jan Hines, Marion County Water Authority. Okay, I'll give y'all an update on how the disaster grant is going, y'all know we, we received one point seven million dollars to be used in areas that were impacted by the storm. Okay, the contractor has all the main lines in and he's getting ready to start filling and flushing and tying customers on and, which were a little bit ahead of schedule. And he says that, um, maybe he's gonna be completed and have everything done by, um, late summer. But it's required of us to be finished and all the money, um, expended by December the fifteenth, so we're well ahead of that. Okay.
December fifteenth of fifteenth?
Of this year, yes.
This year?
This year, yeah.
Well, do you, uh, what about forty-two, when's the completion date on forty-two?
Okay. Um, of course, you know, they moved from forty-two over to nineteen, that area, and that was before that we had gotten the okay to use the balance of the funds.
Well, the reason I'm asking that, there's supposed to be a repayment project for forty-two.
Yeah, I know, I know, so.
So it would be, you'd want your water to be gone before you started.
Right, and I talked to the contractor about that, and he, he has in mind right now of taking a couple of machines and putting my hands back up there and getting that finished.
When would the payment project begin, Mike?
Well, that's one thing I I can bring y'all a little bit of date on, um, hopefully, we've got it currently set at the June letting. What we're gonna need to do, that's, it's a, it's a one point five million dollar project, and we're actually gonna need to to try to get an advancement of some of our federal money for next year's allocation, where we can go ahead and fund that project, but currently it's in the June letting, we need to request an advancement of our federal funds in order, in order to fully fund that project, so, right now, as today is scheduled for the June letting.
Now, is that the bids, the letting of the?
The letting date, and actually, you know, probably the construction would be, if we let it in June, July, probably the the middle or end of August when the actual construction will be.
Okay, okay, good, well, I've gotta go back and find that project today and I'll talk to the contractor again and tell him that they may wanna go ahead and get forty-two done. So it's not to interfere with the paving project. Okay?
Sound good, yeah, we don't.
All right, now, my new business that I'm here today, since things are going so well on this disaster grant, we have an opportunity to apply for a two thousand fifteen community development lot grant, which would require us to, to, to block the funds, and we, we would. Okay, the next, the next project that we could find, we have a comprehensive plan, they kind of list out priorities as far as how many customers we can get with the least amount of funds. Next on that list is highway nineteen in Burr, and what, what we're gonna do.
State road nineteen?
Mm-hmm, state highway nineteen.
Yeah.
Not county, not county. County, they need it too, that, um, you know, we stopped down past, um, Kenneth Reels, right before you get to highway twenty-six. Any familiar with the area, and what this project would do, would go straight down nineteen, basically to the Lamar County line, and pick up everybody on, on either side of nineteen, um, there's not enough funds to go down any, any of the side roads, so we would just be straight down nineteen. Here, I brought y'all something to look at, cost figures and everything, um, we'll be picking up forty-seven thousand holes and at a cost of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I'm one short, but, um, so the grant funds would be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then the authority would be, um, putting in the balance, which is a substantial amount. But, but we're thinking that we can get that much together by the time, um, construction, if we were approved, wouldn't begin until late two thousand sixteen.
With that, all of those five road, the sixteen water lines, so if you ever got, would go to the tributaries.
Everything is six.
You would have to rerun that line.
No, everything's six, it is.
Would have been nine, played twenty-five years ago.
Anytime, anytime that there's room for future expansion, we never did anything smaller than six. And there's one other thing that that's gonna help us if we get funded and do this, we've got that ten inch line that's supposed to supply the well concern. Well, the, the volume of water in that line is too much for our current customers to use, so we have to flush, we have to flush a lot of it on the ground to keep the water fresh. So these customers would be off that line as well and help us with that problem. So all I need is, is for you guys to, um, to give us the authority to submit this application.
All in favor?
Let me get a question for you, guys.
I'm not done.
Uh, how much is this local money y'all got to put in this?
About a hundred and thirty thousand.
Yeah, right here between three eight, three ninety-eight.
Which is a substantial amount for us.
But it would start around Kenneth Reel, live in that area, then go down.
Straight down nineteen, good county line, and I'm in, I'm in, I'm in the process of surveying those folks and the low income, um, all, rush jobs are looking really, really good down in that area. And there's one. Um, and I've got one other thing too, that, that I needed to be approved, is we thought, NACCA and I thought it would be a good idea for, for someone from ADECA to just come down with us and take a look at that area, and, um, NACCA worked up a letter asking for a visit. Because once, I mean, it's, it's one thing, it's one thing to see it on paper, but when you see it firsthand, it gives them a better idea of, of what the low, moderate income folks actually look like in the area.
Need a motion for that, Dave?
Um, I don't know, Scott.
We're gonna go to the other thing.
We already have.
We got a motion, sorry.
We got a motion this day, all in favor? Everybody for it.
Okay, Scott, Scott said, yeah, that y'all need a, a motion to, um, to send a letter to ADECA, asking them to come for a visit.
And I'll make that motion.
One second. All in favor?
All right, I think that's all my business, unless anybody else has any questions. But we're doing, all we can do to get water, there's many people in this one camp. The minute that we get a chance to apply for a grant, we'll just get in there and do it.
I'm getting confused with what we're not thinking.
More thought here.
There's a difference on the state.
My common count is already a person, about a road, we need to be a person too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good down there, well.
Well, that's actually why I came, I wanted to make sure that y'all didn't have a road grant in.
Did you talk about, does, does, I?
I'm talking about, I have no, uh.
Okay.
We got more than they did, didn't we?
Well, that's since the governor.
You know, smell down Blue World.
Emergency, doesn't it?
I think it's got, I mean, I think it's gonna be. I think you did that more for.
It's starting there, um, forty-three going north to probably Lovejoy Road, uh, one thing that we need to be thinking about is we talked, there's a slide on that road. And I've talked about it once before, at some point, I would like authorization to at least do the engineering, to see what's gonna have to be done from a technical standpoint to correct that, because we won't be able to do that road until such time we get that slide corrected, so, um, you know, that's, that's the next one we've got lined up, we finish forty-two. And we're, you know, of course, it takes about a year to get these projects put together, so we'll actually, we've already, actually already have already started some of the preliminary engineering on that project. But, um, at some point I need y'all to authorize me to, to get an engineer to evaluate that slide and get that corrected prior, prior to construction.
We'd like to have an engineer go on.
Well, this, this, it's, it's a, it's a technical thing, it has to do with, we need to get a, a geotech, a geotechnical engineer, somebody that specializes in that area, I mean, it's a, it's a pretty significant slide. And, um, you know, we want, we want to make sure that we, we get it right.
We've got one, right through Mary County Lake, four, four, three.
Well, slides can be tough, they can be tough, and y'all, you know, if y'all wanna, at the appropriate time, if y'all wanna go ahead and authorize me to, to do that at whatever point we, we feel we need to, I mean, that's up to y'all, but it just, you know, like I said, it takes about a year to put these projects together and.
Another year, that'd be the end of the dirt.
Yeah, well, I went through that, Dave, it is, it's getting a little worse, we, we're probably gonna do some additional signage to, to warn the public of, of.
I'm all about failing part of them.
Part of them.
Just going all pieces.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not good, I agree, I mean, that's the reason I bring it up, yeah.
Ain't a road in this county.
Yeah, I mean, if y'all want to authorize me to do that at whatever we need to do, then I can, you know, I can get a consulting firm to, to evaluate that, can I just, I just think that we, that's the way we need to.
I ain't proud of it, wish there's one else that.
We're gonna be investing a large amount of money in a road that we'll have access to after we, after we fix it.
Got it.
Might have to go to the bottom and start up and.
I think.
What I'd like to do, Mike, on some of that up through there, get some people, water, get it out of the road, they done a whole up there for the last three, four days.
See. Who did?
City.
Yeah, you know, we don't, lifetime, we don't know it Kenny, I mean, we don't, we don't.
It's an A.D. this morning.
I, I'll, I'll talk to Rodney and.
I done called him.
Okay, well, they, they need to notify y'all or us or somebody where we can, we can work with them on that.
Oh, you got a more line either?
Yeah.
Right center of the road.
Yeah. Get off out of the center. Thing about it, it's gonna be my right way if you get the camera rolling, up ahead, ain't no right way, don't.
That's where, that's where, that's where the, uh, slide's at?
All the slides way on up the road, we.
Is he?
You been up there, could it, it's on the backside, run, you can see what you can do, run. That is clay.
We just got us. Same girl, can you get any of that clay in it? Or have hanks on top of that clay, the slide and everything?
I was fixing shit.
We might have to, we might have to dig it down to the, to the clay and put that rock in there.
They couldn't be there on forty-three, they couldn't hang it out to the rock.
Take a walk about field, stay around here, go up.
Forty-four?
Under forty, forty-four, all that. You know what they used in that hill? Staircase.
They were.
It is working, it's been, it hasn't moved and, and they put, there's, go down, I mean, four by eight, the four sheets, four foot thick, uh, four foot wide, they put long, they stacked them on top of the fowls and, and stuff, still dirt.
But they covered over there, yeah.
Dirt.
They covered over them with dirt.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so they, I don't, they need to feed the dirt on top of it.
Yeah, some land is papping coming out of there.
Yeah, they got papping, water runs out there, just, uh, and, uh, it, uh, it's been, what, ten years now?
At least five.
That's, that's deep, they're on our field, they're coming.
Over there on, on, on Burr, we were across from it, I, I would take it up like that. I got down in there, the bottom of the track hole and dug out. And made a bench out there, then a bench out there, just kept mixing it up till I got back to the top. It is hell, it is.
I put grain right in that, that's the end of that, yeah.
With that rock, putting that rock in there, you know, you can get a stake, you can start at the bottom and come up. You're on top of the slide, you can't come to the thing, you know, you still on top of those two little slide.
You know, digging basically.
I hope for a guy.
Is my ladder up, up there?
No. I hope for the quail.
They bill or go.
Yeah, love to get quail.
We have three bids, Mr. Chairman. First bid Vulcan asphalt, Cordova outbound. Job site Marion County CRS two, four thirty-nine point forty-five per ton. And they got a two H and a two P, but predominantly we'll use, uh, CRS two, four thirty-nine, forty-five per ton. That's Vulcan asphalt.
How much is four?
Four thirty-nine, forty-five. Next bid, Ergon Asphalt Motions Incorporated.
What, sorry, what's the company name?
Ergon Asphalt and Emotions.
Ergon with E.
Yes. Ergon bids, four forty-six fifty per ton, CRS two, four forty-six fifty. That's, uh, Ergon Asphalt Motions. Next bid.
Four forty-four hundred dollars a ton.
Okay, yes, sir.
That's big with it.
That's good. Next bid, Hunter Fighting Company. Four thirty-two point thirty-five per ton, four thirty-two point thirty-five. Our bid is based on twenty-four tons minimum load per truck tariff.
We can't buy this with a trailer.
That's right, that's, it's based on, of, and I, I need to check the capacity of our trailer to make sure that there's not an issue there. So I just recommend I'll tend to review the bids and make a recommendation at the next meeting.
Who's the little bid?
This is the apparent load bidder, uh, like I said, I need, I need to factor in that minimum load and, and.
Who, who usually gets the most?
Hunt or Vulcan. It's usually one of the two.
American, in long time, been even close.
We'd never, we'd never give a bid to Ergon, Ergon.
I'm like, I'm like, I can review those.
Are you saying?
How many? Yeah, how much is a gallon?
Two hundred and thirty-eight pounds, I believe.
A gallon?
No, a gallon, oh, okay. If I don't, yeah, no, no, I, um, you know, probably eight, eight or ten pounds.
Eight or more, yeah.
Yeah, maybe, I, I don't control what it is all the time. I'll tell you what, while I've got, copied this bid, we need the original, I'm gonna make you copy this bid, y'all.
Oh, you could probably get way more than twenty-four ton or a trailer load. I watch out for most of that truck, many gallons is old.
Probably five or six thousand.
That'd be, that'd be, it's old, nine, five, hundred, ten thousand gallons.
Yeah, you need to make sure before we, before we do that.
How, how's the test place, Rob?
Yes, they have a refinery in test place, and I think Cordova, they, they maybe that, I don't know, they have a refinery in Cordova.
First week, we can go ahead and adjourn, can't we? Don't want to have nothing else.
I definitely will adjourn second.
All in favor?
I'd like to get Kenny to pool all this money for, for the road.